I'd like to continuously bless our mayor and our city council, our city manager, the city attorney, and all the department heads of the city as we gather together tonight to make decisions for the betterment of all the citizens of Dillon. And in everything that we do, we pray to our God, be careful to give your name the glory, the honor, and the praise, but it's in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you, everybody, for coming this evening, up from the press, always good to have you guys here. Start the game. All right, I have a motion approved, the agenda. I make the motion. I all favor, I oppose. Motion to approve the minutes from the eighth regular scheduled meeting in the June 5th budget workshop.
Make the motion.
All favor, I oppose. I think we'll probably get by this meeting pretty quick tonight unless something comes up that's not sort of a lot on the agenda. The thing is the budget coming up with the new fiscal year starting in July. Glenn will have more on that, but just it's going to be modest increases, one that I'm looking at. Now, I kind of keep my eye on it, just the garbage rate on the rollout carts, kind of use that to judge other cities because I know what most of them are paying from around the area to contract that out. It's going to be 5% increase for an additional dollar, $1.14 for total cost of $23.84, which still is pretty good when you compare it to other areas in our county. I'll let Glenn talk more about the water sewer increase and all that. It's how much?
$1.14.
5%.
5%. We're a little behind on that.
We've been doing 5% for the last 30, 40 years, I believe.
Glenn and myself, Randy Brown dead a couple of weeks ago, I know we've been in discussions about Purdue, on the rate of charge Purdue. We've come to a tentative agreement on that. Also, I can bring that up in his report. Good news on the roof, the fire department, which I think offset some of our costs, the preliminary estimates, and you can chime in if I'm wrong or if I misstate this, but the roof was going to be about $50,000. I told Glenn I had a roofer that came in that went on my building with a 15-year warranty and it's chopped off, I think they just bid somewhere around $30,000. It helps if y'all out there, if you know other people doing other work, I hate just an out-of-town guy. But when we're that far out of whack in town, I mean, that's what you get. But it did help in other departments with offsetting some of the costs. The golf course, one thing I noticed, we budgeted $180 on the transfer out of the general fund for this fiscal year. Right, we used the $108 thus far.
That is correct.
It looks like we're going to stay on that $108 thus far.
Haven't done anything for the month of June. It could go up probably, if we transfer it, the most $10,000, if we transfer it.
If we transfer it. Your numbers on the golf course were much better this year competing target. I'd say overall, you were pretty much spot on in some areas. You underestimated, obviously other areas overestimated, but overall, you got a good handle on it this past year. I think it's the first year we've really gotten a better handle on the fees, the cost of the golf course and the revenues that brings in. I thought it was one of the better years for the golf course, just getting a handle on the costs and what you expect is a plus going forward. Of course, I think plays picked up out there from all the other golf courses closing in the vicinity of our area and other people coming in town and playing, holding their bench here, the tournaments and so forth. So that was good. Main Street, you'll see in your packet, we passed first reading of the facade grant. We rolled over the unused portion until this fiscal year 2017 would be total, I think, was $30,000?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four thousand, I'm sorry. We've gotten in that area. Maggie, your part will come up in a little bit, but we've run some advertisements on it, had a lot of response on it. Some things are already being done on Main Street that you can visibly see. There's more coming. You got a call on property owner the other day out of town that want the building and wants to take advantage of it. So we're seeing it start to come together and some results coming. I figured it would when you put some money through. So hopefully that'll not only maintain that, but it'll pick it up. I'll be interested to see which we pass the first reading of the $30,000 budget for the upfit grants, or total two grants under $15,000 apiece to physically rehab your building. We'll see what that will result in too. As I said, it's kind of difficult to define what success is going to be on this, but if both of those grants get taken up and utilized, I think that's a huge success for our Main Street going forward. We'll just have to wait and see. But I do see the activity picking up on Main. We've talked in the past about nature tourism. I think we got a county council, maybe you can chime in, Mr. Coward, but don't you guys have the, and the only reason I ask this is if I get called on it, don't y'all have the funds now to help clean up the river?
Yes.
Just hasn't used it yet.
We're using it now.
Using it now. So basically, what that means is, again, people calling me every now and then, not too much, but sometime they think the city's responsible for that, tell me aren't. But that's good, that's a city that the county now has to, they're going into the river and cutting these trees that the hurricane just decimated all across there. So you can't go kayakking, you really can't go boating much, there's not a whole lot going on. There's one gentleman that's out there on the river trying to cut spots to make scenario back where you can go into the river and have a stop where these ammo dumps were at the time and everything, and maybe looking to start a business on that. That's big in other areas. So if you're a nature lover, you like to get on the river, but you can't, maybe you can soon. Just putting that out there for what. Lastly, I want to thank the, I want to thank the Dillon County Humane Society for all they do. I've gotten closer with the Humane Society the past four or five months in all that they do. At the same time, all the, stay with Gino on the problem dogs, and I had a gentleman up here before council that would picture, so there's a balance on that. I don't think, my tenure as mayor, I get, I see more people upset or a problem that isn't solved by common sense than dogs or neighbors' dogs. It's a no-win situation. But we do have a leash law, and I like to remind everybody on that. The Humane Society does a great job here from their rescue programs and stuff to try to help get these animals out of the shelter, into a home. They even talked me into carrying two people the other day, and that was an adventure to save lives. You've all to thank them, and they're self-respons when you do that. You've got to have a love for it to do it. That's all I have at this time.
Go back in memory, back in May, at our last scheduled meeting, I discussed the possibility of purchasing a tractor that we needed in the street department. And at that time, we only had one quote, which was the local Kubota dealer here for $26,649. We received two more quotes, one from John Dear for $30,000, and another one from another Kubota dealer out of Lake City for $30,000. So the low quote is local for $26,649, and the other two quotes are $30,000 each.
I make the motion.
I'd love to, we're so far behind what we, the tractor that we were using, we haven't been able to use in two months, so far behind in cutting. We need to purchase it.
I'll say to all favor, I, all those opposed, I like.
Thank you very much, I very appreciate that. Janix gave you prior to council meeting, a handout on accommodation tax request. Your accommodation tax committee met in the mid of May, last of May. And on this list, you've got Dillon County Theater, PD Tourism, Dillon Historic School Foundation, and the City of Dillon Parks and Recreation have applied for monies. You see in front of you what the recommendations that the committee has requested. Also, withdraw $4,000 that the Dillon Historic School Foundation requested. The program or event that they were going to have this coming year, they're not going to be able to put on, so they called and wanted to withdraw.
Do you need a motion on this?
Yes, sir.
I make the motion.
Second.
Except to pass the.
To give money to these entities that requested accommodation tax money.
For 17, 18?
Yeah, for starting in July, that's correct. But it's money for them to use in July.
Starting in July.
That's correct.
Where did you move the money from?
We didn't, we just asked in the ballots, in the remaining ballots.
We've got some money left. Okay, we have seconds. All favor.
I oppose. So pass is 4-0.
Yep.
Just to update those that were not here for our special meeting a week ago, Dr. Wallace, the proposed budget was presented to council during this budget workshop. Within that budget, it showed 4% increase in water sewer rates and 5% increase in sanitation. That is correct. We've had first reading on both of those proposed increases back in May, second reading for those two items are on the agenda tonight, which kind of follows back to Purdue where the mayor mentioned that we, Randy Brown last week, who can have to go, and worked out a compromise where they will start paying depreciation again, which we've been paying depreciation for the past year, what we were putting in during the 20 years that we had a contract with Purdue, and they did not pay during that time, the last 12 months. So starting in July, they will start contributing back to.
We were paying $90,000, $30,000 a month.
Correct.
I mean, total into that, you know, SRF.
Combined.
Or SRF and depreciation combined.
Yes.
We did it $90,000 a month, or $30,000 a month. It was $90,000.
What payment?
We were paying $90,000. We were paying $90,000 a quarter, and they were paying $120,000.
Right, right.
What are we doing with that extra money that now we're not spending on SRF? And we don't have that payment anymore.
We don't have that payment anymore.
We should have, we should have lots of money.
Well, at the end of the day, nobody's asking right now is, we were spending whatever that magic number was a year towards SRF.
$360,000 a year. Where's that $360,000?
In your budget, Steve.
Well, I know, but I mean, we'll buy more stuff, or I mean.
Well, I mean, still.
My feeling is, is that we should probably try to redirect that from SRF payment to solidify. The numbers that I'm getting that you're putting away for depreciation, I don't think gets us there quick enough.
Well, Purdue put $120,000 a year.
Correct.
Now, they're only doing half of that.
We did $90,000.
We did $90,000, that's correct. But you're still talking about two different things. You're talking about payment.
So was the $90,000 on top of the $360,000? The $90,000 a year, was that part of the?
What $90,000? The depreciation?
The $90,000 that we used to pay a year for depreciation.
On the city's part.
City's part.
Yeah, that's been in our budget.
Right. Is that part of the $360,000 a year we paid on principal and interest at SRF? Or is that $90,000 on top? All right, so now we're talking about $450,000 a year, and that's a lot of money. I mean, how did we so quickly redistribute that into a regular budget? We ought to have a windfall of money.
At the end of the day, you're correct. It's not going to show, it's not going to show you on your budget.
I think you all, I think you just all bring that down.
Yeah, I mean, you're going to, you're going to see at the end of the day, your profit or your margin.
Yeah. And I want to see it, you know.
You won't see it in your budget line item. Because, I mean, you're not going to budget.
Why, it didn't go down on the rates.
That is correct.
That money should be somewhere in that budget.
It's going to be in your, in your revenue.
On the new side, yeah. What balance is it on my debit side? I know we're not supposed to show.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to say is, we do not budget 100% of all of our revenues.
Okay. What I'm saying is, what I want to do is, I want to get us back to that $5, $6 million in that depreciation fund, so when all hell breaks loose, we'll be ready. You know it will. Come on, hey. That, you know, we talked today, that fund's supposed to be at about 4.5, 4.8 B, and we got 1.2 B in it. And that's, quite honestly, is where Randy Brown's scratching his head, look, I funded it, where's the money?
Oh, he was, he was showing that.
And I'm glad, he's asked for that.
That's right.
I'm kind of in the middle on this.
Point being is, we do not, we do not put 100% of our revenue in our budget, because if you did.
Where you put it?
Well, if you want a balanced budget, you're not going to put 100% of your anticipated revenues and then put 100% of your expenditures. At the end of the day, you're down to zero at the end of the year.
That's what I thought a balanced budget was.
It's balanced, it's balanced, and it's balanced in that what are your revenues and your expenditures match on paper.
Right.
But, I mean, we don't, we don't put anything either on the general fund or the water sewer side, 100% of our revenues, because you're not guaranteed you're going to get all those revenues.
Well, I understand, I understand that. But at the end of the day, when I go and I look at my audit, you know, that's where I want to see that money shifted.
That's where you're going to see it.
Into.
At the end of the day, in your audit, that's depreciation.
I mean, I just, I feel like we're just, we're running downtown in our underwear, you know? And I don't want to get naked. Not just.
And we should, we should.
And we need to sit down with Randy at least once, twice a year. Well, and we discussed the number, and I think that's a good place to start, to get us through that this year where we don't have a contract, but, you know, they need us strong now.
Oh, absolutely.
And, you know, I wouldn't mind them, you know, when we're getting ready to make a big capital expenditure out of that depreciation fund, to be at the table and say, yeah, you need to do that, so we can stay open.
Yeah, we need to.
Oh, oh, I know, but what I'm saying is, is I want them at the table, understanding and being able to say, you know, yeah, that's worth us continuing to have to fund depreciation because I know that I'm going to be using most of that investment that you're going to have. Anyway, I'm sorry I wasn't.
No, that's fine.
They didn't, this was, they didn't have that down on my schedule.
That's no problem. And the goal, like I was mentioning, at the end of the day, our goal is, is to make money in water sewer. We have to make money in water sewer.
We need to put away depreciation money.
That is true.
I was taught very early in my political career, we don't have a profit. No such we've heard as profit.
Water and sewer has to profit.
Yeah.
It has to profit. Follow that, we received notice, I'm going to do three weeks ago, from Rural Infrastructure Authority where we applied for a grant for sewer for $498,000. That is 100% grant, there's no payback. And that will be used for what we call Phase 3, if you go back long-term memory.
Cross Highway 9.
Cross Highway 9, beside Vocational School. That's what that money will be used for.
And that's about what that project.
Somewhere in that ballpark.
Then it cost.
Somewhere in that ballpark. So we were, we were granted those funds, which won't cost us a dime.
Well, if you look at the total of that project, you know, the sinkhole cost us in total, we had three phases, about $1.2 million. So, you know, I mean, in kind, they're giving us a 30% grant.
And you say that, 1.2 million, and you take out this half a million, the other came out of depreciation.
That's right. Well, I know.
In fact, going back to depreciation, since 2008, we had spent 2.2 million of that, with a million some odd still in the account.
So we should have been replacing it.
Well, we were replacing.
No, not at $90,000.
But that was the agreement that the city of Purdue agreed to 20 years ago.
Last eight years have been heavy, you know, every $4 million a year on average. Prior to that, since 96, it's about $155,000.
Now, mind you, our non-restricted.
Right.
How much is? About $800,000 non-restricted.
1.1.
1.1, so we've got, you know, over 2.
2.3.
And depreciation.
Well, what are we going to do when EPA says you can't dump in Little PD River? When's that coming?
Sure.
No problem.
Sure.
Yeah.
So that's the real.
Set that out there because.
Yes, oh, it's going to happen.
We're going to need to be ready for that.
And, you know, once again.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's going to happen. And then we're going to have to determine.
I think you need to be looking for land west of I-95 on 34th and Perks, and, you know, we need to be proactive.
Well, we are looking at the possibility of going straight to the Big P D. We have, the engineers are working on that.
They're not going to put in Little PD, and not going to be long they'll let, we'll take you out of the Big P D. I think that, I mean, and I'm not an engineer, but it seems very expensive to me to take sewage from Little Rock and end it up in Lakeview. You know, why don't we do something on the west side of I-95 for Purdue and be able, in overflow situations, you know, to be able to, you know, bring it down to, you know, the plant out here. We have 2 million gallons a day of capability on the west side of 95, and we can take care of all their stuff except for, you know, special times, and then I think it would cut a lot of expense out of, you know, all these lift stations and pipes and all that stuff.
Well, there's, from a lift station tank standpoint that serves Purdue, only two lift stations.
Only two.
Quarter of a million.
Two. You tried to, tried to move one, right?
Yes, we did. That is true. Another project that we're working on that I try to keep you updated as much as possible is the water tank that's being built out at the Scors complex that we refunded through SRF, through a loan and then a grant. It's erected, the bottom of the tank is up in the air, top of the tank's on the ground, being put together like a puzzle. Hopefully, they'll raise that tomorrow and top it off. And then another week or two, the contractor, or another contractor will be in town, working on some water lines in South 11th Avenue that goes to that plant and that new tank. And hopefully, come September, it will be in operation. It's 300,000 gallons, you got the correct article?
Yes.
300,000 gallon water tank. We've been talking about that one for 15 years. So, you know, it will be in place and operational hopefully in September.
But now, you know, as we go along, the total amount of that project, it hadn't gone up. It seemed like that it went up and then it came back down.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Originally, that was 2.1 million, and that's going to be about where we are with the well and, how much did the well cost us there? About $900,000?
When we built the treatment plant? I don't remember.
I think it was about $900,000.
I don't remember.
$900 million. So we're still pretty close to that original.
To be 15 years, that's right. Absolutely. We have a special meeting, as I think I mentioned, Monday, June 26, at 11:00 a.m., knowing that you wouldn't be able to be here.
Is it on Perks?
No. Councilman Brady said he couldn't be here that night.
Yeah.
And then we had one more, two that couldn't be here that night. So being at a second reading of public hearing, we went through the budget workshop, minus that you were not there, but.
I know.
Yeah, to talk about it, and everybody seemed to be in agreement to what was proposed, so officially it'd be heard on 26 at 11:00 a.m. here in this room. Last thing I have, we've got roughly 400 young women and coaches coming to Dillon on July the 7th, playing a softball state tournament. 24 teams, about 400 participants. They'll be here for about four or five days. Hopefully, they'll do some shopping and spend some money in Dillon. We're going out there getting ads. But, you know, that's going to be one of the biggest crowds we've had in years as far as.
We're in a hotel.
Be nice to have one.
I sent the motel guy who did our study to Ed Ogle, she has me at I-95, and they were real appreciative of the name. What I learned, well, I've heard this before, I come in another night, I have, I never go to Loves, because it's not wide open out there, just you can't hardly get in and out. Loves is in the hotel business too, which would probably be a good contact, make the beams, because they have such a presence here already, and everything going on.
That's all I have at this time.
Or everything else.
Loves would be a, would be a prime candidate for one of their motels here.
And those things are, they're not, they're bloody when they look there.
Not before, I mean, that.
Can't get in and out that place.
Okay, that's all we got.
Yes, sir.
Maggie, anything else you want to add? How about all the facade grants? How many do you anticipate thus far?
I have no idea. The application is on the website, I posted it on Facebook, Vinnie's got it. We won't know, I had delivered one today, we won't know until it's actually July 3rd, what they said, was the first day that Vinnie will accept applications.
He'll get busy on it.
One of the things with Dillon, when you walk down Main Street, when I walk through the post office, a lot of your buildings have awnings. They're those metal ones. That ain't over, and I don't know what it would take for somebody, if it's economically feasible for them to remove those old metal ones and put up something that looks better. I don't know if that would be, you know, I don't know if we can get around that. But, you know, those old buildings have those heavy old metal awnings on them, that may be more of the other grant that may have to address that if they ever want to. I'm sure one day, they're going to come down. There are pretty, a lot of them leaking down when you walk out of the train, pretty bad.
Vinnie, have you accepted any applications yet?
No, I haven't.
No?
Well, you will. Some people are just holding off to see what buildings in more dire need are going to apply, before they go apply.
They're taking their time to figure out what their budget is going to be.
Yeah.
They got to match.
Yes.
They got to do the work. I mean, you got to go in and get the, and get your figures up, and just not buying a sign and just handing it to go ahead and a bill. It takes a little more than that. It takes a little more than that. Well, thank you for what you've done on that. Add all the events you helped with, somebody came to my office the other day and really said, Maggie, if it weren't for her, we wouldn't have this event. Said, yep, she puts her mind to it, she gives it to her, she goes with it. Well, the side grants, it'll be interesting to see how they, I don't think they're going to roll over from next year, unless I'll give a shot. I don't think I'll see that. I hope. Oh, yeah. Citizens report anything, anybody out there will bring our attention tonight? Nothing, unfinished business, ordered seventeen oh five, the water and sewer rates for fiscal year twenty seventeen eighteen, that one.
I make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
I oppose.
Push and carries, ordered seventeen oh six, sanitation rates for twenty seventeen eighteen, which have been discussed.
Most.
Maggie Montever, I oppose. Push and carries. New business, ordered seventeen seven, adopting a maintenance and appearance code for downtown, let me speak about that real quick. We've had our second downtown revitalization committee about two weeks ago, maybe two and a half weeks ago, and a lot of it was on this. It's been, it's been, it's been passed by the zone.
Why?
And the revitalization committee's a hundred percent fine. And I told them, you're going to expect some pushback on it, and I would think anytime you put in an appearance code, you're going to have some pushback eventually. But they expect, I just hope we up here expect, because it's going to come, you know. Now, I hope that's the last recourse it comes to, that we are a partner in it, we aren't going to fight anybody on it, but at the same time, if you ever want your city to grow and an investor to come in and invest in Main Street, they ain't going to invest with a building that's crumbling beside them. It's just like out in the residential neighborhoods, when you buy a house, you want that house, but your neighbor beside you, you have two campers in the front yard and everything else, and you ain't going to buy that house. And it's not fair to them, if they come by something here and spend their money on it, that we aren't going to enforce it. And we are, but like I said, we want to be a partner, not an enforcer. But it's got to be done, other communities have done it, they're doing it, it's fairly simple. And it takes a lot to get to that point, it does. After tonight, we'll have another reading on it, then it's going to be done. It's going to be a lot on Benny's office. Hopefully, hopefully, you won't have anything. But you got to put a stop to buildings becoming condemned on Main Street. It creates all sorts of problems going forward for us up here. So it's just a heart, or a leg of the overall school, downtown revitalization. We'll see how it goes. With that, do I have a motion passed?
I make the motion.
All in favor?
I oppose.
What other questions? The worrying in this space, pretty close to what Lawrence is going to do.
Very, very similar.
They've been very successful with this made. I think we nicked that just a couple little things from what Lawrence did, but it is right there with what Lawrence is doing. And there's a lot of help for that, we wouldn't put that in without having the two lift grants to help do it, okay? Resolution four seventeen, adopting the twenty seventeen Dillon County Hazard Mitigation Plan, is that part of your main thing about?
Well, that's just to follow the theme of guidelines, when there's an emergency or disaster as we had with Hurricane Matthew. If as long as you got a mitigation plan that the county has, came up with, that we agree with, then we're eligible for.
That including things like chemicals, fuels, all of that. Favor of Bush, second law, I oppose. Council member reports. Just a couple questions. Dan, I noticed that the eleven month figure, so we've only got a very small percentage of franchise fees. Do we only get those in June?
We got a big one today, heard four hundred thousand. Do get it.
And how about fourth day, sphere?
That's probably about going to be what we'll end up on pro, pro rate, eleven months out, the well. That's just ten months?
That's ten months.
Same old revitalization committee, I know that committee members have been real active, I got questions wrong, and trying to get back to them, but just committee members there have shown up and really, they've a huge impact with their input, and I thank them for it. Stop.
I'm good.
I don't have any.
If there's nothing else, have a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming.